Welcome to Peoria City Council Regular Meeting for October 1. Would you please rise, join us in a moment of silence, and the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Carlet.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivero.
Here.
Councilmember Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlet.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Thank you. This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. The speaker request forms can be found in the lobby. Fill them out, give them to this clerk, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. The first item up is on the regular agenda, four R appointments, council liaisons.
I am very honored and pleased to be able to present this item for our, the Youth Advisory Board Council Liaison Appointment. This action is actually the adoption of Resolution Number 2013-132, appointing Jacob Jelenek to the Youth Council Liaison Position and naming Thomas Pryor as Youth Council Liaison Alternate. This drives right at the core of Goal Number Five of the Youth Master Plan, which is all about civic engagement, primarily having youth given the opportunity to have their voice heard and positively impact their community. I want to recognize where this began, back in February or so, when Councilmember John Edwards recognized this issue of the youth being able to be heard, and with that, we took some good action. We recognize that getting youth involved is going to take a lot of work. The liaison will participate in regular city council meetings, they'll have access to the information that you have as council members, and they'll be given an opportunity to interact where appropriate with each and every one of you, and will be encouraged to discuss issues with staff as liaisons. So back in November of 2012, we actually adopted the Youth Master Plan. In April, we began to outline the concept with a study session. In June, we passed a policy, you passed policy, and in August, the Youth Advisory Board took action and recommended two applicants to be interviewed by the Council Committee on Policy and Appointments, and that happened in September of this past, actually, that was just last month, wasn't it? So here we are in October already. Wanted to hit a few highlights in what we felt is very important for this program. We want it to be a very positive experience for the Youth Advisory Board member. Make note, press, public, we want it to be a positive experience for our Youth Advisory Board member. We want to definitely increase youth civic engagement, and again, that's Goal Number Five, and it is really an opportunity for mentoring, and the thing that I got quoted on in the press was that school remains a priority. And with that, I'll respond to any questions, or hand it back to the mayor.
Thank you very much. Before I take questions, I have, this is for our appointments, council youth liaisons. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Move by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Carlet. Questions and comments from the council. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a brief comment. I am so excited that we're here tonight. Just ten short months ago since taking office on the city council, this has been a vision of mine, and to see it come to fruition tonight, words just can't express how happy I am, not only for the council and the city, but for also the two young gentlemen who are about to be appointed. You know, the whole goal, the whole thought process behind this for me was to get our youth more engaged and getting them to understand and believe in the city processes and government process, and I've had the opportunity of taking young individuals from Peoria and from the West Valley Youth Advisory Board down to the Capitol at the beginning of the year, and having them meet up with youth leadership, or with the leadership of the House, and being able to engage and talk to them about bills that were being proposed, and to listen to them ask questions of their House representatives and have an engagement, engaging conversation, it was just incredible experience for myself, not only for, you know, maybe self-serving reasons, but it was just amazing to watch those individuals interact. And so, took it upon myself to not only do that, but then also, last month, when we were down there at the Cities of Arizona League of Cities, we were able to go and meet up with the individuals, and I had the opportunity to take them along at their choosing of committee meetings to what they want, what they were passionate about, and so I thought that that was really interesting. And so, again, I think this just takes it to the next level of civic engagement for them, and I am just, again, very pleased to have Jacob and Thomas be selected. I'd also like to recognize the fact that we have some elected officials in the audience, both from the House and the Senate, but also from the school board, and so, again, if you could all rise and be recognized, I'd appreciate that.
Ms. Carlet.
I just wanted to also recognize these two gentlemen, because as part of this, the Chair of the Boards and Commissions, they came before us, and they had to be interviewed by us as a panel, and they were phenomenal. I mean, they really were not only gracious, but intelligent and well-versed and knowledgeable. I think one of you came up and first thing out of your mouth was a quote from Councilmember Edwards that you'd read in the newspaper. Wow, what a way to start. So, I mean, these are, these are children that will make us all proud, and I know it won't be too much longer before when, you know, when people are asked to stand in the audience, it will be those two who will be standing in the audience. So, welcome, we're very, very happy to have you as part of our council.
Thank you. This is an historic occasion, but there are no other city has a youth liaison sitting on the council dais during a regular council meetings. Welcome, and this is so good, and so important, that we do have two of our legislators here tonight, Mr. Gray and Ms. Lesko. They're both in the, from the House, and of course, we have the Speaker of the House, Mr. Tobin, here because of you. It's your fault. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Ames.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome our two new members. One is going to be sitting, and the other, if he isn't there, will be sitting, and I think you were referred to as children, but I'm going to refer to you as young adults. So, we look forward to seeing both of you and working with both of you.
Okay. At this point, I want to call for a vote, and then we will have the swearing-in. This is for our appointments, council youth liaisons. Please vote. The clerk will record your votes. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Please come forward to be honored, and the judge will come out and swear you in. And to clog, and to clog things up, could the parents please come up too? And join us in the swearing-in ceremony? Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Swenson, John Shell, members of the public. With your leave, Mayor, I will now administer the oath. May I ask all the liaison members to please raise your right hands for the oath and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the laws of Arizona, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I will faithfully perform the duties of the position of youth liaison for the City of Peoria Council. So help me God. Very well. Mayor, council members, please congratulate and welcome your new liaison.
have watched me travel around the state talking about some very important things, and nothing is more than what I've been referring to as our nation's next greatest generation. And I'm the father of five, and my youngest is 18, so, you know, I'm a believer that we've had great generations in the past who have shown us the way, and none will be better than the generation that is coming up behind us. And the good Lord knows, we need this generation for our nation and the world, so I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're here. I do have a proclamation. I think I'm going to read this proclamation and give it to the mayor, and then, and we have two for each of you too, but I thought I'd also mention that in my earlier days, I got to meet U. O'Brien. How many people remember U. O'Brien? This'll give away the ages, okay. So my, there we go. So now, my dear departed mother-in-law loved U. O'Brien. He was probably the best-looking movie star that had hit the silver screen way back when, but he created a group called Hobie, U. O'Brien Foundation, and it was all about youth in action, and for, and my hat's off to Councilman Edwards and the entire, the mayor as well, and the entire city of Peoria for leading this charge. Wouldn't it be nice if 220, how many, how many more cities do we have represented? 220 something? It's a lot. I mean, we just did TPT, so we knew we had a lot of people there. So if we had that many people, that many city councils, do what you've done tonight, can you get just a sense for a minute what your future political leadership would be? I mean, so this isn't just historical, this is, this is truly Arizonan, this is truly us reaching out to the youth, and it's almost like passing the baton, not quite yet, but we're real close. So, and when you're sitting on that council dais, you have to remember, if you follow Representative Gray and Representative Lesko's example, and I'm sure you will, ask a lot of questions, because they're in my office, ask a lot of questions all the time, and it makes policy better. So, without further ado, I wanted to read this and present this to the mayor, and I hope it's one of many, many that I can present around the state because of your example. House recognition, the city of Peoria, Arizona. Whereas the city of Peoria is the first city in the state of Arizona to recognize and appoint a youth liaison to the city council, whereas the city of Peoria, mayor and city council have adopted and recognized the Youth Master Plan in which youth are an important valuable resource to the future of the city of Peoria. Whereas the mayor and city council, following the Youth Master Plan recommendation, to allow for the appointment of a youth liaison selected from the Youth Advisory Board, and whereas the mayor and city council of this day, on this day, October 1st, 2013, welcome the appointment of Jacob Jelenek Senior at Sunrise Mountain High School in Peoria, and as an ex-officio member of the city council, and Thomas Pryor, a senior of Liberty High School in Peoria, as the alternate ex-officio member. And whereas, the youth liaison is a non-voting member of the council, the youth liaison will be actively engaged and involved in council discussions at city council meetings. And whereas, the city of Peoria is recognizing the importance of youth in the community as a valuable resource for the future of the city, and encourage all youth to become engaged with their city government, community organizations. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the House of Representatives in the state of Arizona do hereby recognize the city of Peoria specifically engineering our youth in this manner. Dated this day, October 2013, Andy Tobin, Speaker of the House. Mayor, congratulations.
We'll now take a five-minute recess, and then we'll resume. Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome back to this Peoria City Council regular meeting for October 1. Right now, we have a presentation legislative update from Arizona Speaker of the House of Representatives, Representatives, Andy Tobin. Mr. Tobin was born in New York City. He's the son of a retired New York City Police Lieutenant and the second of six children. Is also the grandson of Irish immigrants and his parents have been happily married for 57 years. Andy moved to Arizona in 1979 and worked in banking and real estate lending for 13 years in the Phoenix metro area. Throughout his time serving the people of Arizona, Andy has been recognized and honored as the 2007 freshman legislator of the year by the Arizona School Board Association, 2008 legislator of the year by the Arizona School Superintendents, 2008 and 9 champion of the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, 2008 legislator of the year by Arizona Small Business Association where he had the highest pro-business score ever for a state lawmaker, the 2008 Arizona Chamber Commerce legislator of the year, 2011 AZ Bio Trailblazer Award recipient for continuing contributing to the growth of Arizona's bio-science industry, the 2011/12 Prescott Valley Economic Foundation legislator of the year as a 2012 valued partner in preserving Arizona's healthcare safety net by the Phoenix Children's Hospital, the 2012 Greater Phoenix Economic Council, which is GPEC award for outstanding regional contribution to the advancement of Arizona's economy, creation of quality jobs and dedication to public service, and the 2012 US Chamber Institute for Legal Reform State Leadership Award recipient as was awarded in 2011 to Wisconsin Governor Scott Walker. Please help me welcome Peoria legislator and Speaker of the House of Arizona Representatives, who also represents the largest city in Yavapai County, which is Peoria,
Amen.
Mr. Andy Tobin.
Thank you. That's great. Mayor, thank you for that introduction. Do you mind mailing that to my wife tonight? How wonderful I am. Listen, I have a little housekeeping maybe to do. I have some friends here. Mr. Nick Semenetta, I think he has something to do in this town. That's just so you know, if you haven't heard, I was born in Manhattan. I grew up in Long Island and New York City and I got out of there as quickly as I could. So I'm 30 something years here in Arizona, but born a Yankee fan. And I know they cost me votes whenever I run, but you know, you gotta be who you are. Except for me, this is probably the biggest Yankee fan in Arizona is Nick Semenetta. So it's always good to see Nick. So, and he does an awful lot for the city. The other thing I thought I'd mention to you is because I know and I honor the city council. I especially appreciate the youth being now involved in this, in this huge experiment, which I know will be very successful. And I appreciate your dedication to service and you know, I know when you leave council chambers, you don't leave this job. I know you don't. And I know when you wake up in the morning, your first call is probably about this job. And I know it is. And if you allow me just one moment, I have a guest who's here tonight because she came in from Texas. And then we were having some conversation about mental health and psychology board and things like that during the break. And I just have to tell you, she was coming in and we were going to talk about integration of medical care and mental health. And we were talking about how Arizona does business. And I thought it was so appropriate. I said, well, listen, I can't see you right away. I'm going to be at Prescott in Peoria and we're going to do this presentation. I'm going to speak tonight and I invited her tonight and she said yes. So Andrew Perry came all the way in from Texas to be with us tonight so that I'm going to meet with her when we're done. But I thank you for doing that for me. And this is Senpatico and Bridgeway and Centene Companies who are part of a public-private partnership to bring these products to our state. So I thank you for coming here and letting me spend a few minutes. And thank you, Mr. Heiner, as well for being part of that. So let me kind of give you a snapshot of where things have been maybe. And I don't have to tell the city council. You folks who, this is the boots-on-the-ground politics right here. You folks have everybody come right up in front of you. When you come down to the city council, to the chamber at the house, you know, Representative Lesko, who's doing incredible job and Representative Gray, you're wearing this, in this hole. And you know, everybody's up on the bleachers and they're looking in and you know, right here, everybody's like right in front. And I love that about, about your service. And I love that about our counties as well. And let's go back not so long ago when, you know, Arizona's had some dire straits. I mean, we've been in some rough places and you've had some very courageous decisions to make. And so is the folks at the legislature. And to put it in perspective, just briefly and kind of maybe point you as to how we got there and where we are at, you should know that there was a point in time that we weren't sure we had payroll at the state cap. Not next year, but like next month. And I know you were all sitting there knowing and going, oh my gosh, what's going to happen? And we lost 300,000 jobs in our state. And you know what happens to most of those jobs that you lose? They end up on your access system and your services system. And you know that because those 300,000 jobs cost us $300 million in state revenue. And those 300,000 folks who were on services cost us $300 million in state revenue. And that's a big number. And you know, there's not that much money in Arizona to go around. And the economy started to slip and kept slipping. The worst part about that, when I first arrived is that folks knew. We knew. We knew that little corner house wasn't worth half a million dollars not so long ago. We knew. Things just kept looking better and better. And what do you do in government sometimes? You sit there and go, well, it was good this year. Probably take that and bump it up a little higher. And we knew. And we knew it was going to get worse. But we kept spending. And we kept borrowing. And we borrowed more and we spent more. At the end of the day, when we lost the 300,000 jobs that cost us $300 million, and we had hundreds of thousands more people on our services that cost us $300 million, our debt started to become a million dollars a day or another $300 million. That's what happened. That's how Arizona, where we were going. But this city council, like many city councils, and many of the public, and many of our counties, decided we would all stand together. And you helped us pass Prop 100. And I know that wasn't an easy thing to do. Prop 100 was that three-year tax, that one-cent tax. We said it would go for three years and nobody believed us and I didn't blame them. You know, oh yeah, it won't last that long. It won't. And what a lot of the public doesn't know, Mayor, and city council members is, is you know this, but you didn't get any of that money. That money all went into the state coffers so that we can alleviate further cuts. Because government got cut by a quarter. Largest in the nation. Very tough choices that had to be made. And yet, what we all knew right from the beginning is we were never going to get better unless we got better together. And when I travel around the state, there are places that are still really hurting. And you know, the mayor and I were talking about things are coming back. We can feel it's a little bit, it's a little bit. And that's true. Till maybe you go to Yuma. Till maybe you go to some of the places on a reservation who aren't doing so well. We still have a long way to go. But we're in a place now, we are in a place now that we get a chance. We get a chance not to do what we did before and a chance to grow Arizona back to where we know it should be. So our youth have a shot at having the life that we had. So I share, I share that short story with you because in the seven years I've been down at the legislature, it hasn't always been fun coming to talk to city councils. Because you know, when we, when we touch things, it came right here, right to your home, right to your street curbs, right to your sewers. I know it, right to your sidewalks, roads, Mayor. We've had those conversations. We have a chance now in the next budget year to, for the first time, and this was the President of the Senate and I having this conversation with our appropriations chairman the other day, we may not be shifting the HRF money in the next two years. You think about that and it doesn't sound like it's a big political move. You know, that's a big political move. That's $100 million a year that goes back into our communities, back into roadways. We would not have been able to have this conversation had it not been for the one-cent sales tax to pull us out of the hole in which we were in. Now it's gone. And all of a sudden, our sales tax now is very competitive with our neighbors. It's so competitive with our neighbors, as a matter of fact, that we're starting to see more of our sales tax revenues go up. And that's because we're starting to see what we were hoping to do is have modest growth in government to start bringing us back. And we knew that jobs had to be created and we knew we don't do that. We know you all do that. We know we don't do that. So it was important for us to make sure that we created a climate that would allow that to happen and allow that to happen quickly. So we had modest growth in government, putting money back into K-12. I don't think anybody would argue that we gotta have a workforce because we can change all the economic factors that we can at the capital. And we've changed a lot, haven't we, Representative Lesko and Representative Gray? We talked about ag reduction and ag taxes. We talked about how are we going to fix, you know, our R&amp;D or research and development system. We talked about capital gains. We've had all these conversations. You just joined us on TPT tax reform. The first in the country. We'll be having a conversation about income tax soon. So what we wanted to do was to put all the tools in the toolbox and then get out of your way. Just like you want us to get out of your way. And I know you do. Must be scary watching state lawmakers come in from time to time. But for a change, it's some good news. It's been a long time since we had a chance to smile. So I want to just drag you a little bit forward to give you a sense of what that means going forward. Less than a month ago, I took a bipartisan group to Mexico City. Mexico City. Why do we go to Mexico City? Because there's only one state in the entire country that has a trade office in Mexico City. From America, there's only one. They're called Texas. And they're bringing an awful lot of capital from Mexico into Texas. We're buying an awful lot of product from Mexico into Arizona. But with our tax changes and with our economic development, we are now, here in Arizona, more competitive for a business to move here than to move to Austin, Texas. By 10%. We are certainly more competitive than for a company to move to Los Angeles than to Phoenix by 20%. There's a reason that we need to have a conversation with our partners to the south. And I'm not talking about, we didn't go down to apologize. We went down there to tell them that we can be a good partner. And economic freedom is valuable too. And sometimes we all don't like the laws that each other's passed, but that doesn't mean that the next century, the century we're turning over to folks like Jacob shouldn't be the century of the Americas. Because if you look at where the world is going, you're going to see the Pacific Rim is going to be where the consumption is going to be going forward. And we need to have partners going forward. And this country is just south of us and they respect us. And we were there on 9/11 and we sat in the chambers of the Senate. The equivalent of the US Senate. We sat in the chamber of their house, equivalent of the US House. And the senators got up and they remembered 9/11 in a moment of silence, unannounced. Remembering their friends to the north. So I share with you, the time has come, not just for good public policy, you know, that we're passing and we're doing it together, but it's also a time for us to now move forward. Our nation has the greatest resources. And one of them just joined your city council tonight. We have an obligation to continue to make, not just our state, but our nation, even more economically viable. And we can do that because as we've been moving the economy scale, our dollars are going up in Arizona. We have a billion dollars in the bank, $450 million in a rainy day fund. We will survive through the next two years. And I'm not going to tell you that we have a balanced budget. That would be not genuine. Because we knew all along, we were going to use some of that savings account to carry us through the next two years. So we wouldn't be coming back here for less resources to you. And we knew we didn't want to raise more taxes on the community. So I think we got a pretty good plan going forward. So with that, I don't know how many of you get to read some of these magazines that are out there. I pay a lot of attention to them because I'm always looking to find out who's beating us up. But for the first time, I opened up Forbes magazine. Has anybody seen Forbes magazine last week? Ranks now Arizona number one in future job growth. Not number two, not number three, number one in future job growth. And that job growth is predicted at 3% and up going forward. And I don't believe all the economists out there. I didn't see anybody knocking on my door saying, oh, by the way, Arizona's economy is going to collapse years ago. I didn't see it. They didn't come see me. So I'm always questioning, I've watched these numbers go up and down. But you know, that's a good sign. That's a good sign. They recognize we have an incredible workforce here and they recognize we have great public servants. And they recognize we've made the steps and not just at the state cap. At the city and county level. We made the tough choices to tighten our belts, to be prepared going forward. And we learned lessons about how not to go forward the wrong way. So the reason I was so excited to come tonight wasn't just to see the youth. I wanted to come in and say thank you. And I didn't just want to say thank you to the city leadership. I want to say thank you to the community. Because they've made tough choices too. And we got some tough fights ahead. You don't want me to get started on what's going on in Washington in the last 48 hours. I might not get out of here very quickly. But I, but I will share with you that there is great optimism here in Arizona for what we know to be, for what we know to be the state that we are. And I just want to finish with where I started. I know I'm from rural Arizona and you're my biggest city. I have to always plug that because he tells me that wherever I see him. I get that. I live in a little town called Polden. It's not even a town. It's a long way from Manhattan, which was a short way from Twin Towers. And I just have to say that I believe, I believe that we're all walking arm in arm and hand in hand. We're going to have our fights and disagreements. But I believe that the vast majority of Arizona share my feeling that Arizona comes back when we all do. Not just one place, not just two places. But we come back when our, when our families and friends in Yuma start coming back too. And we come back and we do better when our families and friends and neighbors on the reservation come back too. And we're primed to do that. So I come to thank your community for, for having some patience in some very difficult times and to know clearly that there is some great room for optimism. And a lot of it has to do with some of the very courageous leadership that's here. And I thank you for that, Mayor. So anyway, thank you for giving me some time. Appreciate it.
Wait a minute, hold on. Counsel, comments and questions?
I don't know why they give me this because they just turn pages and I haven't got a clue what it says. They hand me this and I go, I know what I'm talking about. Yeah, I'm sure I can figure out a chart here. You want, you want to know an interesting chart though in Mexico? Just, I skipped over it. I should have really read it, but you can't see it. So I thought I'd pass it on. The geographic breakdown of investments, which means investments coming into Arizona from Mexico. Let me see. 7% Europe, 4% Japan. 11% California, 24% back east, 11% to Canada, 16% only in the southwest. Basically, that's saying that we have a long way to go. And there, there's a reason that we need to be well-conditioning ourselves to be a big player down in Mexico. We have the switchbacks down in Picacho Peak we're working on. That could be the possibility of the hugest train yard for product and movement in Arizona history. You have a chance at Interstate 11, which is that one that comes around this backside over here and, you know, Grand Avenue. That is a huge opportunity and resource. So the time has come for our investment in Arizona as well.
Before you leave, I'd like to thank you for, for your actions on the TPT legislation. You've made it clear throughout the session, especially during leadership meetings, that you were concerned about the potential negative impacts of the bill on local governments. And you require discussions continue as to how to best provide for a meaningful tax reform while not devastating the budgets of the cities. That was critically important to every city in the state of Arizona. Thank you for that. I want to thank you for your support of our revenue allocation districts legislation. You have supported us on that. I thank you for that. I hope sincerely that the HRF funds come back. We can use the money, really. And finally, I do have one question and I would like to know, what is the status of the certificate of necessity issue that you've created?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there's, we had a committee hearing on that, that issue. I think, I don't know that there's any status. I think the answer was, is that we have, we have so many new members. To put it in perspective, there are 60 members in the House. And out of the 60 members, it's kind of like high school and sometimes we act like that. But you have, you have a senior, junior, freshman, sophomore class. And the senior class, the senior class that's left is three people. Three people. Representative Kavanaugh, myself, and the minority leader Campbell. I think that's it, isn't it? There's three out of 60. So I'm only sharing that thought with you because I think you're going to see why in a minute. So if you go back and less, members who have served less than three years equals more than half of the House. More than half of the folks are there less than two terms. So the reason you'll see a lot of these meetings coming up is it's Representative Lesko, Representative Gray, myself. It is our obligation to be training and exposing our members to as much of this detail about the budget suspension. The first thing you hand a new member coming in is you hand them this big budget suspension and they go, where do I start? Figure it out, man. You know, there's a zero and whatever this number is. So I only mention that to you because there's so many questions about a lot of the deep detail, TPT. I mean, we got into a TPT conversation and we had to have you guys come down and help us understand it. Because you do. And that was very important for us. So, so I think you're seeing the same thing about the certificates of necessity. I think what it is, is what is really going on? Are these, are these certificates still necessary? You know, let's, let's have a learning experience here. And it's not unlike what's going on with the individual income tax. Well, let's have a conversation with that means. That doesn't mean a flat tax or a consumption tax. That might mean, well, are we just competitive or not? You know, with our neighbors. So I think it's just an ongoing education process. Doesn't mean something can't pop up in any given moment while you're down there until it, shiny die is the last moment of the state legislative evening or morning, or whatever time that might happen. That means everything's over and we go home. And prior to that happening, anything can pop up. So I know why you, I know why there's fear on your face. But I don't, I don't know that there's anything more really moving forward on that other than an informational hearing and, you know, I haven't seen any legislation getting dropped yet.
Okay, for the edification of the public, the certificate of necessity allows an entity to run an ambulance service. I'm on the League of Cities Executive Committee and in several cities throughout the state, they have a problem with that. Last one that led complaints was Yuma. Al was talking about how the response time is declining instead of increasing. And they would like to form their own ambulance company in the city of Yuma. And they can't do it because of this certificate of necessity. And that's what Drew, you have raised that as an issue. It's a critical issue throughout the state.
Yeah, there's a mayor and council members, there's a, in my county, Yavapai County, north, remember that part? That's part of the city. If you, I mean, Lifeline Ambulance, who just sold to another company, they, they cover other counties. I mean, they're up in Williams as well. I mean, they're, they're down over here, you know, I know I saw them at Uronel. I think they were helping on the fire. But I mean, they're all over. So the question is always, can we do it better? Should these things be changed around? Should somebody else be making these choices, maybe in rural areas? Or should the councils be making these? be making these decisions? And, you know, of course, they do if it's a municipal, you know, fire department or something like Phoenix, or others may go to an ambulance service within the Fire Corps. But at the end of the day, right now, there's been, I think what they're having, they're just trying to say, get their arms around and go, okay, let's let folks chime in to see if there's some things that should change. So the door's open down there. I think you're going to find an incredible opportunity to go down and visit and meet a lot of these new and really dynamic young people who are at the legislature, who are open for information and knowledge. This is your chance to go get them, you know. Don't tell them I sent you, though.
Any questions for the council?
I just have a comment. First of all, I want to thank you for coming here. It's so important to us. You know, we really are, as you said, boots on the ground. You know, we are in touch with people, and they tell us what matters in their backyard, in their front yard, when they, you know, go to work every day. And so we try as hard as we can to be as involved with them and to answer their questions and to help them, to make our city better. And, you know, I want to thank Representative Lesko and Gray and Lovis because they're in our community a lot. We see them out there. They're at public meetings, they're at events, so they're involved, and you have to be that in order to know what people need in the state of Arizona. You know, we're in flux a lot of times. But my biggest thank you is for your focus on jobs. Anything that you can do to make our state more open to businesses, to people who want to do business here, is a favor to every single resident that we have here, because there is nothing more important than being able to provide for your family. And that's what we all need at the very base. So I appreciate your focus on that, and I hope that you will just continue along those lines to do everything that we can to make sure that everybody has gained full employment.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for that. I appreciate it. And just so you know, I think we're about halfway back from the jobs we lost, which, considering where we were, that's pretty huge, and those jobs are, a lot of them are right here. So thank you very much, Councilman. Mayor, thank you. Best of luck to you, Councilman, and it was nice. Mr. Swenson, thank you. It was nice meeting you.
Thank you for coming down, sir. Next on the agenda is a presentation on Christmas for the troops.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity. We meet again on Christmas for the troops. I believe this is my fourth year now. I know it's October 1st, and the temperature hit ninety-six degrees, but we're going to talk about Christmas. I'm sure the elves up north have been working for a few months, so it's time for us to get busy too. We're going to run a PowerPoint. These pictures were supplied by Austin Delaney, who is the son of our own Alan Delaney. Austin is home now. These are pictures from last year after Christmas. Austin left the military after his third concussion from an IED. Glad to report to you, though, he's in college at Flagstaff and on the dean's list this year, so he is recovering from his brain injury very well. We've got a whole new group of young men who were here last year at the holidays and will not be this year. Last year, the Peoria Sunset Lions, who, those are my compadres, my elves, with a lot of hard work from the community and a huge cooperation from the council, we mailed two hundred and thirty-six boxes of priority if it fits, it ships, large boxes, at the cost of three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Actually, if it wasn't for if it ships, if it fits, it ships, it would have been twenty-four hundred dollars greater. In that group of boxes, there were also sixteen cases of potato chips and Cracker Jacks, which arrived to one of the outposts on Christmas Day. And I want to read you one of the emails that we got back, and they actually kind of follow each other. There's two of them here. It says, "Let me first say how grateful everyone is to have received your care packages. Your organization was second only to the Parker Lions Club," which won't happen this year, "and a big thank you is in order. I'm certain that we have, we received well over eighty packages from the Peoria Sunset Lions Club Foundation, but I lost count after the first fifty or so. They couldn't have come at a better time, as we had discovered that many of our outlying bases had not received any packages during this holiday season. What you allowed us to do was send some warm wishes to our brothers in arms who found themselves serving at some very remote posts. Since we are an aviation unit, we coordinated to send at least fifty of your boxes, and they got delivered for the first soldiers on Christmas Day, and even though I didn't talk to them, I am sure that they would like for me to thank and give your appreciation. I personally am humbled by the generosity of your community and was pleasantly surprised by the support of so many. And a simple thank you is all that I can ask and all I can give. I don't know what you have planned for the future, but I can tell you that my unit is getting ready to return back home to Arizona very soon, and I would like to ask you that for your future mailings that you have, that you send to our sister unit, and he supplies me with another address for this year for Christmas in Afghanistan. And it was, again, thank you, the American service member, to all of the communities in Arizona that participated in this. And it's really interesting because in the outpost that they were sending to, and by the way, this is Christmas Day, Best Buy donated the television, and I think you'll see a picture where you might see a can of, a couple of cans of soda, and Walmart sent over multiple cases of soda pop for their Christmas presents, which, one of the really neat things is, it's good old American, you know, the food that we take for granted and what let our kids have, that's what they miss the most when I get over there, because they really are just children at heart. This is actually a hospital and a sleeping area. You'll see the first aid station behind it. This is where the wounded sleep, excuse me, until they can be transported back. Gives you an idea of just what the living conditions are like. The second email, it says, "My name is Darcy, and I'm a twenty-two-year-old combat engineer currently serving with the Australian Defense Forces in Afghanistan alongside some of your countrymen and women. I've been in the military for just over three years, but this is my first time overseas. I'm stationed at one of the more remote areas of the country, and as such, we have formed a pretty tight group with everyone around us. The American soldiers here shared the care packages with some of us, something that we are extremely thankful for. It was a brilliant surprise yesterday to receive handwritten letters, food, and toiletries. Christmas away from loved ones is difficult, especially since some of my fellow soldiers are very young and are freshly married. But Christmas Day was very special this year. Cracker Jacks, who knew? We're all thankful that you gave us so, gave as much as you do. Some of the people serving here don't have much of a family back home, and so when we get care packages sent from Americans, people they've never met, it truly makes the Christmas Day meaningful, and I was writing to personally thank you for all you've done." What's interesting, when we got this email, one of our members is a past international director for the Lions International, and so he emailed this, forwarded on to a friend of his that he made when he was touring internationally to someone in Australia. Turns out that the friend's son knows this young man. It's a small world. But also because of this email, the Lions over there are now adopting Christmas for their troops in Australia. So the love just keeps going. This is pictures of, they have two seasons over there, hot and dirty and mud. Some of the muddy, some of the muddy areas, there you go. This is the opposite season. The mud seeps into everything, so when clothes get washed, you hang them out, you wash by hand, there's no way to dry them. You either get this, or you get the sandstorm, so laundry isn't really done. One of the new things on our list of requests, besides all the toiletries and good old American junk food, is now wraparound sunglasses to keep the sand out of their eyes as best possible. Regular sunglasses do not fit under some of the high-test, high-pressure goggles they wear, so that's a new one on the list. They're expensive, so any cash donations, we will buy those sunglasses. The other thing they're looking for is the little black, and this is new on the list, the LED black flashlights have to be black, no reflection, and the LEDs last longer, but that little tiny light, not only do you not want, oh, by the way, this is Justin Delaney. This is the young man who took most of these pictures. Anyway, the flashlight they actually use, obviously at night with not a bright light, but they will read in their little cubby holes at night, they can't sleep, but they also use them to scorpion hunt before they crawl into their sacks or put their boots on. So that's another new one on the list. So once again, I want to thank the city in advance. We already have had huge cooperation. In fact, Carl, you'll be glad to know that we've already distributed over twenty-four boxes to city departments, and I hear there's quite a competition going between floors as to who can fill theirs up first. Thank you very much. I want the public, again, to realize that the police departments, the fire departments, the libraries, city hall are all drop-off points. We've started collecting already, and we will stop the twenty-second of November so that we can be posted in time for Christmas. Any questions?
Questions? Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I would like to compliment you on this, doing this for many years now, and I know it really warms the hearts of our troops. And this is Arizona troops, you said?
These are all Arizona troops, yes.
It's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very, and the other thing that I wanted to point out is, like they said, there's so many of them that don't have much family support. In this tough economic time, as the speaker said, jobs are gone. I mean, kids right out of high school with no chance of going to college, out of the foster care systems and out of the state programs. The only way for them to ever go to college is through the military. So this is where they end up. This is where their future is, but there's no support system for them back here. There's no families, there's no letters, there's no one even would know if they didn't return home. Those are the, that's why we do it. They need to know that they are just as supported and just as loved. Any other questions?
Other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda are all items that are with a C. They've been considered to be routine, or they've been previously reviewed by the city council. They will be enacted by one motion unless a council member requests an item to be removed. Mr. Edwards?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to have eight C polled, please.
Request. Seeing then, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of eight C?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Ames, second by Mr. Leonie. Please vote. Clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Eight C, ordinance community commission on youth.
Our community services director, John Sefton, will present a brief presentation of this item.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and Council. I can't stop talking about kids. And I'm going to actually try something new with this presentation. I'm going to ask you to use your seat belts tonight. We're going to go on a little trip through the universe. And at the center of our universe are the youth, and I think that this is really what the master plan has been all about, keeping very youth-centric programs. And this piece, your action item tonight, eight C, is the creation of the community commission on youth. And let's see how well this will work. Boom. Doesn't that look like the universe? And at the center of the universe are our youth. And as a council and as a team of administration, we follow the works that you've put together and utilize, oh, didn't quite work the way I wanted it to, the youth master plan. We utilize citizen engagement frequently. We have all of our boards and commissions. Community Services has seven with this one, would make seven boards and commissions. Our grants programs, our recreation programs, and public safety all have a direct impact on the quality of life for youth. Our youth advisory board, one of those many commissions, we have nineteen youth, couple of alternates, and they're all youngsters in the, from eighth grade, seven to twelve. They all serve a term of two years. And just tonight, we appointed our first council liaison. The liaison will attend council meetings and participate. Our department and several others, we have a number of different types of programs that go on that truly impact the quality of life for youth in Peoria, from recreation programs to sports leagues, police department programs, the Young Ambassador Program, council member for a day, so many different ways that the city of Peoria has an impact on the quality of life for young people. And we're not the only ones. There are countless youth organizations in Peoria that assist in making a great day for kids, from Team Emphasis with basketball, Future Stars, YMCA, Theater Works, and ABT, both have very strong youth programs, and a number of different youth sports leagues, Little League and Pop Warner Football, so many different groups out there that we partner with to, again, make major impact on the youth. So this item, the community commission on youth, formalizes what we talked about back on September 3rd with our progress that we've made with the youth master plan and what our goal, I had laid out the objective of establishing a commission similar to the library board, similar to the Parks and Recreation Board, that would be, have appointed members and follow all of the board appointee processes that we have in place with the subcommittee on council policy, and be charged with executing the youth master plan, coming up with an action plan, and I had laid out in every other month, opportunity for us to really organize and to create an educational opportunity. And I highlighted and read here one of the most important things, in my opinion, about this commission, and that is the partner network, recognizing that we have so many different folks and different opportunities for very interested folks to make a difference in the lives of youth. This is real quick, I'm not going to test you on reading it, but this is the detail that's provided to you in your council communication and within the ordinance itself, and lays out very broadly, but specifically, the responsibilities of this commission. And again, keeping in tune that the youth are at the center point of this commission and its importance. So with that, I'll do my best to respond to questions.
Questions? Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. John, I do have a couple of questions. Again, I appreciate you putting this presentation together, but what's a little concerning to me is, and again, I one-hundred percent support the youth program and all of its activities, but what bothers me in some of the communication is, if you go to page two of five, bullet number C, where it says, "All members shall have been known to demonstrate interest in youth services policies." And you're looking to put seven adults on this committee, is that correct?
The boards and commissions would be adults eighteen and over.
Yes. My concern is, is we have spent so much time putting, you know, encouraging the young adults to get onto the youth advisory board. I'm concerned that, why aren't we taking the youth advisory board and expanding their ability to manage their own program? And meaning that I don't feel that we need seven adults to be telling nineteen of our youth how to operate. I think we should be challenging the youth to come up with ideas and bringing it to your group with ideas. And if adults want to participate, I encourage adults to come out and participate in the youth advisory board. You know, they can come in and sit in on the monthly meetings and bring in ideas, but I don't feel that we should have seven adults telling the youth what to do.
Thank you. Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I concur with that. We have a youth master plan, we have a youth- We have a youth master plan, we have a youth advisory committee. I think that youth advisory committee should work with the youth master plan. At least we should do this initially, we can see how well that works, and they can look at how they think it should be implemented from their point of view as youth. And there is the city staff that works with them that can answer questions that they may bring up, and things can come to the board from them. I don't think we need an intermediary group of adults, a special commission of adults, it's kind of like bringing their parents into the picture. And I think we should work with them directly. We've put one of them up here on the diocese with us, and I think we want to recognize that, and I don't think we have a need for special boards and commissions here. We already have a setup. We worked a long time with the youth advisory board, and now we're giving more attention to them, and I think they should be the ones that work through the whole youth master plan and decide on the kinds of things, are we implementing them and so forth, and the city staff will be working with them to answer questions. So with that, I actually move that there may be some... That we vote on this, and I'm going to vote no myself.
I'll come back to you on that. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because this is an issue that pertains to youth, I do have mixed feelings, as the two council members do. On one hand, because the youth master plan, which was approved by council, the goal number four, the number one recommendation, was to create a committee like this, I think that speaks a little bit to the creation of the committee. Further, I think that one of their goals was because it was to implement the youth master plan. I believe in the council packet, it said that at least three of the council... Excuse me, three of the board members had to have professional backgrounds in youth programs, and I think that having a professional background, it just shows that they have experience in implementing the youth master plan and implementing youth programs. So on that side, I think that having a professional adult commission is a good idea, but on the other hand, I do have my concerns. Just as that number one recommendation in the youth master plan called for the creation of a committee, the last sentence, sentence on page 15 of the youth master plan said, "Structured properly, this group will coordinate the efforts of the community as a whole, ensuring that the needs of Peoria's youth are being met, and they were not wasting scarce resources by duplicating programs and services." And I want to emphasize that last part about not duplicating programs and services that go towards youth. I feel like many of these tasks of this new committee are already being tackled by the youth advisory board, right now working on growing our board and taking on new responsibilities, and I'd much rather see all these tasks that are being tasked to this new Community Commission on Youth be tasked in a more formal manner to the youth advisory board. I think that it would be in the best interest of the youth advisory board and the city of Peoria to make sure that a lot of these issues, I believe it was specifically items C, D, and E in the council packet, be the responsibility of the youth advisory board. And I just, above all, do not want this committee to detract from the goals and the current initiatives of the youth advisory board as it stands.
Thank you. Ms. Scarlett.
Thank you. That was tremendous. A great addition. I do want to comment on this because I think that this is an important board that we actually do need. We do have the youth advisory board, it's true, and they are very, very busy, as you well know, very involved in a lot of different functions, and they are also a bit transient because they do grow up, and they graduate and they move on. And we've had the youth advisory board for a long time and utilized them in a lot of city processes and decisions, but now we have something very large. We have the youth master plan, which has not been in effect until, as of late, within the last year, and we need to find a way to move this forward very strategically, and that's something that staff would end up having to do. There's a lot of new programs and a lot of new expectations because of the youth master plan, and staff's going to have to do those things. They're going to have to be responsible for moving that forward. They need some more assistance. So that's why this citizens group is there. It's actually five members and two alternates, I believe, if I have that correct. No, is it just seven? In any case, it's a group of people who can help accomplish some of those goals under the direction of staff utilizing the youth advisory board as needed. I think that it's just one more tool, one more asset, one more group of hands to be able to help move this program forward. The youth master plan is a big deal. It's a really big deal, and we can't just put it on staff, and we can't just put it on the youth advisory board, and the youth master plan does call for a citizens committee. So here it is, and I think that it's another asset, a way for us to, you know, get the most that we can out of the youth master plan. I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. I'll go back to you. One other question, would the council like to consider perhaps a mixture of youth and adults on this committee, as opposed to being all youth or all adults? Just throwing that out for consideration. So that you do get the continuity of the adults, because they don't age while they age, but they don't age out.
Not out loud.
They probably age faster, but they don't age out. So you'd have some continuity from an adult perspective, but allow the youth to also participate.
I think that's a really good idea. I would be open to adding youth to this board. What is the current makeup of the board? Seven members? And it just calls for seven members who are adults?
Councilmember Scarlett, yes, seven. Well, the typical board, and I believe that is in ordinance, states voting adults, so there would be one of those by... For the youth advisory board, there's a special ordinance that sets aside the age requirements. For this ordinance, other boards and commissions, and I may be corrected, call for voting adults. So that would qualify at 18 and above. And you might even recognize that even with a lot of our boards and commissions, we are missing a segment of our population, that 18 to 24, 18 to 25, probably even to 30, that are possibly not engaged as well. But as far as the makeup, as it's currently structured, I would call for an adult.
Okay, but we can change that, can't we?
Well, that's a question for the attorney. Can we do that by ordinance?
I'd have to ask you about that.
Okay, so the next question, the next question I'm going to ask is, should we send this back to staff and have them make sure we're legal, and then bring it back?
Yeah, and I think, certainly not to correct the assistant city attorney, but I think with respect to the creation of this particular body, the council has the ability to provide direction as to the makeup of the body. So they could be adults and/or youth at your discretion.
Okay, so we could go ahead and do that, and then if for some reason it's not legal, we could fix it later.
Correct. But I believe, I believe I'm on pretty solid ground here that you have the power to do that.
Okay, we'll take your word for it.
I think if we're looking at item C, we can make that adjustment right there in that paragraph that calls for the... Who can be on the committee?
Okay. Mr. Ames.
Yeah, I don't like that idea at all. It's adults, and the adults will kind of oversee the kids kind of directly in that commission, and it still leaves the youth advisory board as a secondary entity. I think this should go to the youth advisory board. We can see how it works for a year. If we feel that they're not making the right kinds of input to move forward on the youth master plan, then we can relook at this. But I think we should leave it with youth advisory board at this point, and that's the motion I would... I'd like to just vote on this, and I'll vote no on this recommendation to have this special boards and commissions of adults, or a mixed board of adults and youth.
Let me see if I got it right. So you're making a motion to essentially assign all these duties to youth advisory board and bring it back for review in a year?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay. Any other conversation, questions, comments about this? Ms. Scarlett?
Yes, I think the youth advisory board is already working to do a lot of different things, and I don't see putting all of these issues onto that board. Wow, they are going to have to take on a whole lot more things, and they are going to have to work in a much more structured environment, and you're asking an awful lot of kids who are already working really hard and doing a lot of things with school, and you know, this board actually uses the youth advisory board, but they don't depend on them to do everything.
Yeah, I think you described a good mission for them, and they're obviously not going to do everything in one month or one year, nor would an adult board. And I think we ought to see what they can do, can they address the issues on the youth master plan? Some of the things we're kind of doing already, other things they can look at how to improve and to start, and they can make recommendations with the help of, remember, they already have. I think it's three staff members that work with them, and they can make recommendations, and some things can come from the council. We want to see what the youth can do here, independent of adults, kind of like their parents being with them. So I don't think this is a good idea, but I think we should see what the youth advisory board can do in terms of youth master plan for one year, and if we feel there isn't progress, then we can look at having an adult commission.
Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think that as it stands, we are an advisory board. When it comes to item, number, excuse me, letter C, when it says advise the city, that's more of what our scope of practice is, is more of an advisory board. But on the same hand, I feel that these members are going to be professionals, they have a very professional background, which a lot of, I'm not going to say a lot of, all of the youth don't have. We don't have a professional background in implementing policy. But going back to being an advisory council, I think it'd be very important that if this community council on youth were created, that they keep us in mind all the time, that when they aren't quite sure what to do or how to act, that they come to us for advice because we are the advisory council. And I think that close collaboration is absolutely key. Perhaps there should be some means of formal collaboration between the two committees. And just going on about what we're currently doing with the, excuse me, youth master plan is we're working on a youth bill of rights as well. So we are working on some parts of it, but when it comes to implementation, I think that a professional advice or professional implementation would be very helpful.
Okay. I'm going to try to... I think I got it, but I'm not sure. So essentially, what you're saying is, you would like to see adults on this?
At this...
Or let me rephrase that. The motion is that all these duties be assigned to the youth commission. Yes or no?
For it for one year.
I would have to say no.
Thank you. Other questions and comments? It's been moved and seconded? The motion is to assign all these duties to the youth advisory commission? Please vote. Clerk will record your vote.
Wait, I want to vote...
It is defeated. Four to three with Mr. Rivera, Mr. Leonie, and Mr. Edwards voting yes, Patana Ames, Barrett, and Scarlett voting no. So we're back to...
Wait, no, what did no mean? No meant that I wanted to vote...
No usually means no.
Yeah, no, and I voted no.
You voted no.
I voted no on the...
On your motion?
No, not on my motion.
It was on your motion. Your motion was to assign all these duties to the advisory commission.
No, but I said it in a way, vote on the eight C, and I was going to vote no.
It wasn't a vote on eight C, it was a vote on your motion. Shall we do it again?
We should do it again, yes.
All right. The motion is to assign all these duties to the advisory, youth advisory commission, authority or youth... Sure, go ahead, question.
But we're still going to vote on eight C, right, after this?
No, this is eight C. If this passes, then that's what happens, and we move on to the next issue.
So a yes means...
A yes vote means all these duties that are envisioned for the Community Commission on Youth go to the youth advisory group.
Mr. Mayor?
If we vote no, we come back to eight C, and we do that again.
Mr. Mayor, procedurally, I think where we're at is there is the item eight C, which is either up or down on a vote at this point. If there's a motion to amend, we need to...
There was a motion to amend.
No, I just said I wanted us to vote on eight C, and I was going to vote no.
Okay.
So if there's a motion to amend, it would have to be seconded, and a vote would have to be taken on the motion to amend.
There was a motion made by him, and it was seconded.
I can do it either way, but I want it clear what...
Okay. So legal, go ahead and do this again.
The... My advice would be to vote on one issue at a time. Vote the issue up and down, or vote the amendment up or down, but not vote on both of them at the same time in order to avoid the confusion that I think we've just...
But if you vote on the amendment, the amendment's successful, then you don't vote on the original because it's already been defeated.
That's correct, but if a motion to amend's been made and a second has been carried on that motion to amend, then a vote needs to be taken before a vote can be taken on the original agenda item.
That's what we just did.
Okay.
And except that he cast, he cast the wrong vote. He thought he was voting on this and not on his own amended. He made a motion to transfer all these duties to the youth advisory board, and it was seconded. That's what we voted on. He misvoted, so it's, we need to, we want to do it again.
That'd be fine.
That's okay?
That's fine.
So a yes vote means the youth advisory board is going to do these, a no vote means...
We go back and talk some more about the Community Commission on Youth. We go back to the original motion. So if a yes vote means all duties are shifted to the youth advisory board, and no vote means you don't want to shift it all to the youth advisory board, you want to consider other options. Is everyone clear on that?
We pick that one more time.
A yes vote means all these duties are going to be taken up by the kids on the youth advisory board.
Did you vote on that?
I rest my case. Yes, we did, but we're going to do it again. Yeah, trust me, we're going to do it again. In other words, no adults are involved, it's going to be all done by the youth. Okay? That's a yes vote. A no vote means we'll come back and talk about a mixture, or all adults, or whatever.
Yes vote means it'd be no adults.
Correct. That's the short version, that's it.
Yes vote, and no vote means...
We'll come back and talk about other things. Everybody clear? One more time. Please vote. Clerk will record your vote. This time it is successful with Barrett and Scarlett voting no. Thank you very much. Next item is new business, 20R, Arizona Broadway Theater land lease. Who's up?
Mayor Barrett and Councilmembers Jeff Tyne. Deputy City Manager will present this item.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. As you recall, the city has been in negotiations with Arizona Broadway Theater officials regarding the sale of their land, of the land located on Paradise Lane. On April 9th, the city council authorized a reduced rent amount of $2,000 a month for a period of six months as those negotiations continued. Since that time, city staff have been in numerous meetings with ABT officials to address the future lease rates and to pursue the possible sale of land. At this point, we believe we are coming close to those terms between both parties, and as a result, the staff is recommending a 90-day period of lease payments at $3,000 a month as we prepare the legal documents and structure the lease agreement. And so the action item before you is to approve that 90-day period at a lease rate of $3,000 a month. And with that, I'll address any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Edwards?
I really don't... Sorry, thank you, Mayor. I really don't have any questions, but what I would like to do is make an amendment to the proposal.
Okay.
I'd like to make an amendment to raise from $3,000 to $4,600 with 120-day timeframe.
Okay. Could I have a second? Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments, discussion? We need to vote on the amended motion for Arizona Broadway Theater land lease. It is to raise the monthly payments to $4,600 a month and extend the land lease to 120 days instead of 90. Is everyone clear on that?
Yeah, I'd like a point of clarification.
Go ahead.
The 120 days is the maximum, it could be sooner than that, right?
Pardon me?
It's 120 days, but if there's an agreement prior to that, it can be... It's 120 days, but if there's an agreement prior to that, it can be prior to 120 days.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to go to the full term.
Okay.
Other questions? This is the Arizona Broadway Theater land lease, increasing the rent from three, from suggested $3,000 to $4,600 and from 90 days to 120 days. Please vote. Clerk will record your votes. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. 21R, public hearing liquor licenses, various locations. This is a new restaurant liquor license, Series 12, for Oak Carnivores, located at 9832 West Northern Avenue. A second one is a new government liquor license, Series 5, for Pioneer Community Park. Could I have the staff report?
Brent Mattingly, our Chief Financial Officer, will make this presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Properties were posted in accordance with Arizona statutes. All reviewing departments recommend approval. All fees were paid and no comments were received from the public.
Okay, thank you very much. Going to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for liquor licenses at Oak Carnivores at 9832 West Northern and a liquor license, Series 5, for Pioneer Community Park. Would anyone in the audience care to comment on either one of these applications? Seeing none, I will close. Comment period. Questions or comments from the council? Could I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Leonie. Please vote. Clerk will record your votes. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is 22R, public hearing, Class A small game bingo license, Peoria Senior Center.
Mr. Mayor, the properties were posted, fees have been paid, and all departments reviewed the application according to state statutes and recommend approval.
Thank you. And we're open to public hearing. This is a public hearing for the Class A small game bingo license for Peoria Senior Center at E335 West Jefferson. Anyone in the audience care to comment on this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Questions or comments from the council?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes, I have a clarification. When I read this, it seemed like they already have this license. How is it different?
I believe that they want to carry on more of the same activity and need an expanded ability to do that.
A second license or revised license or?
I think, I believe it's an additional license.
An additional license, like an attachment to the license or?
I believe it's an additional license.
An additional license that they need. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Second.
Could I have a motion?
Oh.
Sorry.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leonie, seconded by Mr. Ames. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. Somebody short, two, or short two votes? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is 23R, public hearing, rezoning at E3rd Avenue and Happy Valley Road. Staff report.
Chris Hockes, our Planning and Community Development Director, will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome, Mr. Jelenik as well. Item 23R is a proposed rezoning-
Just a moment. I'm sorry, I missed an opportunity for the member of the public to speak to 20R, which was the Broadway Theater. Charlene Van Leuven, does she still wish to speak?
No.
I apologize. Okay. You're up now.
Okay. Item 23R, this is a proposed rezoning submitted by RBF Consulting on behalf of Heath Spart Development. The subject site, which is delineated in red in the red polygon, is currently vacant and consists of approximately 26.28 acres. It's located east of the southeast corner of 83rd Avenue and Happy Valley Road. The, when you look in at the site, the southern 230 feet of the site is contained within an existing SRP overhead power line easement, which provides physical separation from this proposed development and to existing neighborhoods to the south, which are Cailejos Estates and Silver Crest at Treasure Canyon, which have 18,000 square foot lots or roughly half acre lots. The eastern edge of the site is contained within the Rock Springs Wash and provides physical separation between this development and the Shea Homes development that's located to the east called Silver Canyon Ranch, which is a development that's generally consists of one acre lots. Contextually, the site is also near the future Alora Vita South, or otherwise probably called as the Patriot American Case. This is a case, as you recall, that was brought to the council about two years ago and consists of two square miles and the southern square mile upwards of potentially 2,000 lots. This slide illustrates the existing zoning. The site in question is currently zoned general agricultural, which primarily permits agricultural uses and homes on two acres and larger lots. Now, it's also important to note that the zoning ordinance recognizes the ag zone as a holding district. So what's a holding district? This is a district that purposely holds land in less intensive uses until the time is appropriate for a more intensive development or development that's in line with the general plan. In this case, the applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property to R118, single-family residential with a minimum lot size of at least 18,000 square feet. This request would be consistent with the two communities to the south. As I mentioned, Cailejos Estates and Silver Crest at Treasure Canyon both enjoy identical zoning of R118. Across Rock Springs to the east, as I mentioned, the Shea Development has SR43 or suburban ranch zoning with one acre lot minimum. And again, the Alora Vita South Development's a large master plan zone, planned community district, contains a variable lot sizes starting at 6,000 square feet. This slide illustrates the proposed development plan. In the request, the applicant is proposing, again, to rezone the site to R118 to enable a 27-lot detached, single-family residential development. This would yield an overall gross density of 1.03 units per acre. The applicant has also submitted an accompanying preliminary plat application that illustrates lot sizes ranging from 18,000 square feet, the minimum, to 20,000 square feet, roughly 20,000 square feet. So this graphic illustrates the development plan, the plat. Some of the features of the plat include an expanded landscape buffer. If you look at Lot 27 to the west, it's a 30-foot landscape buffer. It expands to Track A, which is upwards of 250-foot landscape buffer. And then if you look further up Happy Valley to the east, north of Lot 16, that's about 100-foot landscape buffer. So I think what that does is preserve the parkway feel of Happy Valley. Other features are the open space. The total open space for the project is 12.89 acres. That represents approximately 49% of the total gross area of the parcel. The open space includes improved recreation facilities, including two 12-foot decomposed granite trails contained within the SRP easement that could be used for east-west access for pedestrian and equestrian users, as well as trail access along Rock Springs Wash, which will provide regional north-south access along that trail system. The development will be accessed to Happy Valley Road. As the development is under 30 lots, the fire code does allow the homes in development be fire sprinkled in lieu of a secondary access. This slide illustrates the Peoria General Plan land use map. Of course, the land use map is one of several components in the general plan. As you know, the general plan is the fundamental policy document guiding future growth and development in the city. However, unlike a zoning map, which is parcel-specific and has a legal description attached to it, the land use map is generalized. It's a general plan. The edges and boundaries are subject to refinement as development proposals come in. With respect to the development proposal in front of us, the SRP power corridor is designated as park open space. The balance of the development is designated as estate residential. 02 units per acre is the density, with a target density of one unit per acre. It's important to note, when we look at the general plan, the estate residential is a designation that recognizes areas where larger lots, single-family residential is desirable, but there's a number of different lot sizes that can advance the vision of that designation. And they include everything from R118, 18,000 square foot lots and larger, which we consider advancing that designation's character. Some of the key points in the analysis, again, the proposal, density of 1.03 units per acre, it's within the estate residential range of 0 to 2 units per acre. The 18,000 square feet lots, as I mentioned, is consistent with the character and visions in that designation. The development is compatible with adjoining developments. The developments to the south are, have identical zoning of R118. And also, we, the proposal contributes to lifestyle choice by providing a diversity of housing choice options in the general area and provides a transition from the busy arterial of Happy Valley Road. Finally, it advances the pro switches, the parks, recreation, open space, trails, master plan by providing regional trail linkages and protects neighborhoods by minimizing cut-through traffic. And we'll talk more about that in a second, but a lot of, lot of key items there. Terms of citizen participation, as part of the process, the city does send out a notification when we get the application in and also prior to the hearing. And notification is sent to all property ownerships within a 600-foot radius as long, as far as, in addition to, registered HOAs within a one-mile radius of the site. Initially, we received three calls just inquiring about the proposal, but through the balance of the project, we did not receive any written opposition or support with the proposal. As you know, we do require a neighborhood meeting to be held. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on April 30th at Terramar School Media Center, and we had about 15 residents that attended that meeting. I would, some of the concerns, there were four categories of concerns voiced by some residents. There were some attendees that were opposed to any view fencing. There was a perception that view fencing invited crime opportunities. And so, actually, when the city looks at this, we typically promote view fencing adjacent to recreational corridors or open space areas as a, as a SEPTED principle or crime prevention through environmental design. It's a way to put eyes on the, on the area. So, with this respect, we will, we will work with the applicant during the plat stage in terms of the fencing. There was also, I would say uniformly with all the attendees at the meeting, opposition to 81st Avenue going through and 81st Avenue connection. And I will mention that that was not part of the initial, that wasn't part of the proposal by the applicant. There was a concern also by some attendees that maybe the lot size was too small and ought to be more, more like one acre lot size. And as I mentioned in the previous analysis, this proposal does meet our general plan and it is consistent with joining neighborhoods which enjoy the same type of zoning and lot size. And there was also a concern expressed by some attendees that perhaps some of the homes along the southern boundary be limited to, to, to one-story homes. I will remark that, that all our residential zoning categories allow one- and two-story homes, including the existing ag zoning district and including the neighborhoods located to the south. And also to point out too, as I mentioned, there's a 230-foot SRP power line corridor that provides separation between that. So, staff did not support a cap on the one-story homes on that, on that side. The Planning and Zoning Commission hearing was held on August 15th in 2013. One person spoke in opposition desiring a one-acre lot minimum. The, there was a lot of good discussion at the commission. This item went on for about an hour. I think the two elements that generated probably the most attention was 81st Avenue, whether it should go through, and then the full median access at Happy Valley Parkway. Now, collectively, the commission felt with regard to the 81st Avenue connection, they believed that the connection was intentional and would provide better overall connectivity and minimize cul-de-sacs along a parkway. So that was the overall opinion of the commission on 81st Avenue. With regard to the second issue, the full median access at Happy Valley, they questioned the need for full access given that Happy Valley is considered a limited access parkway. And there were some concerns also about the, the safety particularly of westbound trips from the development on Happy Valley, given the speeds and future trip generation that we might see on Happy Valley Parkway. So, ultimately, the recommendation that the Planning Commission forwarded was a recommendation of approval with two added stipulations. The first one being number 26, that development shall have two points of vehicular access, so one being Happy Valley and the second one being 81st Avenue. The second stipulation that they, they asked for was that the, the access to development be right-in, right-out only rather than full access. So shortly thereafter, after the Planning Commission recommendation, we did receive quite a few calls, and I believe the council office received some calls too, of citizens in opposition to the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, namely the 81st Avenue extension. And we also received some correspondence from the applicant as well with concerns. With the concerns voiced, the staff sat down with the applicant and we explored different alternatives. Regarding 81st Avenue, in the final analysis, while the, while the general plan does promote neighborhood connectivity, we also have policies in the general plan that promote a local street network that protects neighborhoods and discourages non-local cut-through traffic. Now, 81st Avenue is not identified as a collector arterial. So we saw in this circumstance that impacts of connectivity outweighing, I should say, the impacts on the neighborhood outweighing the benefits of connectivity. So the staff recommendation was not to support 81st Avenue going through. On the second item, let me back up a second, also, also 81st Avenue, should note, even if it won't go through, it does provide opportunities for trail access, you know, along the SRP corridor and also will provide water and sewer connections to areas to the south. We're just proposing it not be roadway access. Regarding Happy Valley Road, on the second issue, the right-in, right-out, the traffic engineers did look at this issue. Limited access arterials are typically, they have signals at the mile intersections or the half-mile intersections and they typically have median breaks at the quarter-mile of the, of the parkway. In this circumstance, the access into the development is roughly at the quarter-mile area. So we believed in the final analysis that our traffic engineers, they've reviewed the traffic report, they're comfortable with full access. They believe with a small development of 27 lots, we believe it can be safely accommodated. And so, in the end, I should note that the city always reserves the right to modify access should it prove out differently in the future. So with that, there are two recommendations. Of course, there's the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation that I outlined early in the, early in the presentation, but there's also the staff recommendation that the staff is recommending that the council vote for tonight, which does not observe the two additional stipulations that the Planning Commission recommended. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay. First of all, I need to open a public hearing. This is a public hearing on rezoning at E3rd Avenue, Happy Valley Road. I have two folks who want to speak to this issue. I can hear you now or you can wait until the council asks their questions about this and then call on you before the vote. And I'm, I'm holding them, so I won't, won't forget like I did last time. And it's your choice. So, Matthew Bennett and Greg Stoltz, would you like to speak now or would you like to wait and speak after the council discusses the issue?
Mayor, we'll wait till after.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else in the audience care to speak to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, questions, comments? Ms. Ames?
Yeah, I think I'm happy to see that we're not running 81st through there because I can see they would get a lot of traffic from south of them using that to get to Happy Valley in a shorter route. But is, is the fire department set, they're satisfied with the access in case of an emergency there?
Counselor Ames, they, they are satisfied, provided that all the lots in the development are fire sprinkled.
And can you tell me a little bit more about the full median, that'd be right-in and right-out from the development? Is that right? Is there, there's a kind of space that they can wait there and then, then merge in? Is that right?
Well, the, the development as proposed and as recommended by staff would provide full median access at Happy Valley. So, those leaving the development would have the ability to go westbound and eastbound onto Happy Valley. The commission had proposed that, that access point be relegated to right-in, right-out. So you could not, if you're going westbound, you could not access the development.
Yeah, I, I think they need to access both ways, but is there a, a kind of right-away kind of thing out there in the, a median holding area that they can go into when they go left?
Counselor Ames, we-
You don't think that's necessary?
It, it may be. I'm going to ask Andy Granger, our city engineer, to assist me. We are reviewing a preliminary plat and as part of that, we look at the, the geometry of the road as well.
Wouldn't have to be a long one, a couple of cars there.
Right.
But I don't know what space limitations you have at that point.
Yes, Counselor Ames, to answer your question, the median, there will have to be a break in the median, but there will be sufficient room to, for queuing to turn and go west.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Carlott?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. I think that, that the developer did a really good job of working with the neighborhoods here. And I think it's also really important when new development comes in that it does not negatively impact the neighborhoods around it. That is, that is, their, their job is to prevent negative impact on our existing communities, existing neighborhoods, people who've been there a very long time. And I think, you know, you might look at 81st Avenue and say, oh yeah, that looks like a road that was destined to go through to Happy Valley. But, you know, those people who have lived there for years and years might not agree with you. And I think we need to really take into consideration what they feel their neighborhood should look and feel like. And so I, I completely support us not allowing 83rd to go through to Happy Valley because it would be cut-through traffic that we would end up having to deal with later when there was, you know, a kid in the street or somebody said there's a lot of speeding on 81st and then we'd end up putting in- then we'd end up putting in speed humps and all kinds of other mitigation. And I think it's best that we just don't create this problem instead of having to fix it later. So I think 83rd, or excuse me, 81st not going through is a great idea, and, you know, this neighborhood conforms very, very well with densities and lot sizes of the, the surrounding area. So I really support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I do have a-
Ms. Ames?
Yeah, I'd like to know about the property to the, as I'm looking at it, to the left there west, will, will that eventually have homes?
Councilmember Ames, the property to the west is actually three individual parcels, three individual ownerships, and so that's all, I believe, designated on the general plan residential, zone residential as well. So when, when those proposals come in, whatever they are, we'll of course have to look at access. I think access from Happy Valley might be difficult given the location of the intersection, so we'll have to look very carefully about how those properties are accessed.
You mean, you mean running that street that goes through this development all the way to 83rd?
Or, or from 83rd, rather.
Yeah, you meant 83rd.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can you speak, a request for Matthew Bennett? You have three minutes. Go on down. Here's the clock, we'll peer up here where the seal is right now.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before the council and the mayor right now. I just, I attended this previous meeting, so I want to talk more about how the meeting actually came to terms with adding these two stipulations. Right off the bat, I want to say with, I don't remember, Commissioner Greg Loper seemed to right up front kind of lead everybody on the council as far as throwing out reasons why 81st should go through. Right off the bat, he had brought up the, a picture that they had used, the developer had brought up Google Maps and just showed-
I'm going to pause for just a moment. I, I don't want to hear names. The commissioner is fine, I don't know how, what, what could be construed as a personal attack to happen in public.
Okay, yeah, I understand. But basically, what I feel was made is kind of a snap judgment, because what he looked at that map and just basically said, look at 81st, it looks like it should go through. Look at Callejos, it should go through. And he kind of, it was brought up as far as, it made it sound like those streets were designed by Peoria to go through. And contrary to that, Callejos was never designed to go through. It actually dead-ends into a gated community. 81st was actually never supposed to even be paved to the back of our lots, which is the power line corridor. It was actually supposed to end at Hatfield Road. Several members within Peoria throughout my time living at that house and other people coming to the neighborhood and buying houses and stuff have talked to people within Peoria, and it has never been on their future plans to put 81st through. And that has been voiced to myself and several of my neighbors. I've been part of the HOA, and that's, I'm telling you, this is a big concern of our entire neighborhood. Just basically, it was spoken to the fact that, you know, just by looking at it, 81st was supposed to go through, and that wasn't the case. There was a couple other points he brought up with, basically, he brought up, he was concerned with having acceleration lanes and D cell lanes and stuff like that on Happy Valley for safety to make lefts and stuff. Upon Peoria presenting their case and everything, they had a traffic engineer that had gone through all these scenarios and actually signed off. I don't know the experience level of the board and everything there, but I mean, when your own employees say it works, you know, the future plans, I would typically believe people who have that knowledge and, and experience. My other point was, he said, well, with only 27 houses proposed, that's not going to be much traffic. Well, the problem with that is if you open up 81st out to Happy Valley and bring it through our neighborhood and stuff, you have now just opened up 81st all the way down to Williams Road, which is a mile and a half south. So I don't know how many homes are even on 81st in that mile and a half, but, I mean, that's a lot of homes. And there has been no traffic studies done or anything to support these stipulations to say, hey, we're going to have a lot more traffic here, because now we can bypass 83rd and go straight to 80, or straight up 81st to Happy Valley. And I know when I bought our house there, we actually bought it from my in-laws and stuff, they were original owners back in 99. Part of why we like that neighborhood is it's quiet. We can have our family, my kids can play up front of the house, and we're not as concerned of cars flying through. If you open that up, there's so many residences that's going to take advantage of that to go up through Happy Valley. And I don't know that even their, their, the way they have it drawn up and stuff, if their structure can support that much traffic. But like I said, that, to me, the developer has been great working with us. They were at the meeting, they listened to our concerns, and hence 81st was not part of their deal to open up.
Okay. Your, your time is up. I assume then that you are supporting the staff recommendation, which is not to open up 81st?
Correct. I just didn't know if that could change again, because that last meeting, I was under the assumption that this couldn't change either, so I just, thank you very much for giving me the time to speak.
Absolutely. Greg Stoltz?
Thank you, council members. It's actually pretty exciting to be here tonight. A lot of amazing things have happened. Jacob and, and the, the Christmas gifts for the, for the veterans, so. I also support the recommendation. I am the president of Callejos Estates Homeowner Association. We did an electronic petition throughout the three neighborhoods that surround us, which is Callejos, Silver Crest, and Eagle Canyon, and we've collected 67 signatures which oppose 81st going through. Matt did a great job explaining. Kathy, you did a, a great job. You can just visualize when there's probably 10 cars a day that are on that road currently, what it might look like. My understanding is within half a mile down that stretch, there's three school bus stops. So we, we would be very opposed at, for that to go through at any point in time. So if you guys would like a copy of the, the petition that we collected, I can enter that as, as an exhibit. Some of the comments that were left on the website were the safety of the children, the increased traffic, runners, bikers, and kids that, that use that. Again, it's mainly used for pedestrians and not even traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you provide a copy to the clerk?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Could I have a motion?
I move that we accept option A here, prove case Z 13 0005 as recommended by the staff with full vehicular access at Happy Valley Road, including a median break and no extension of 81st Avenue.
Yes, it's been moved and seconded to accept the staff's recommendation, which essentially is no access along 81st Avenue and to have the brakes against on Happy Valley. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Please vote. Clerk, we'll record the vote. Agent Amos, thank you very much. Next up is 24r amended contract update, Theater Works.
John Sefner, Community Services Director is back on this one, and Brenda Ranky from the department is also present.
Good evening again, Mayor and council. We're going to actually stay in the neighborhood on this one. And our Theater Works amended contract update. So as you'll recall, we've had quite a bit of discussion, April 30th, May 7th, both executive sessions, June 4th and June 18th, discussions concerning this item, and the contract with Theater Works were previous items. Since that June, we had a number of different workings with the Theater Works Board. You can see there that we had a board retreat, June 17th, July 15th, August 19th, and September 16th. Staff attended, Brenda Ranky was here. And we've had specific meetings with Recreation Manager, myself, and Theater Works Executive Director throughout July, August, and September to talk about the project deliverables and the way that they have adjusted their operations. Per year direction, there were several requirements. First was the accessing, increased for the city to 20 days per year. Thus far, we've used five, and we have more on, on the schedule. That scheduling is going very well. Theater Works was to participate in seven city-affiliated events. We have seven scheduled, one's already been, happened. They were to perform, have three performance series during the next 16 months. The result has been five scheduled through October 2nd and two, or through October, and two have been completed. We're also to identify, showcase culturally diverse performances, and Theater Works has delivered 12 completed thus far and additional 15 in the near future. Board meeting minutes and financial statements were provided, were to be provided monthly, and that has been done and have been completed. As well, programming for youth, seniors, and developmentally disabled were part of your objectives, and seven programs have been completed, and they've been very aggressive at reaching out to those special populations. And the final requirement from the update on the agreement was to ensure that the ticket surcharge that was in arrears at the time was paid, and that has been collected. Part of the discussion was also to develop a, a matrix, if you will, of how Theater Works can ensure their success in the near future and moving forward. We broke that into four specific areas: financial services, board development, marketing focus, programming, and rentals. And Brenda's going to walk through the specifics associated with their successes there.
Thanks, John. So Theater Works has just been working on their amendments and completing all that has been required of them. They've been working on these different areas along the way. First and foremost, I think has been the most important one, is the financial area and that, and they've hired a new audit firm right now, and they're currently going through an audit for that. And I think probably one of the most important grants that they've ever received is through the Piper Foundation. They are now have their integrated marketing development and membership software is on right now. They're actually ahead of schedule in implementing that. They should have their membership program ready to go within the next 30 days, and all the components of the software should be implemented within the next 60 to 90 days. So that's really critical to them right now. And over time, they should be able to get some really good statistical information from that software, which currently they're using worksheets to do all that right now and judge their business plan from that. In addition, tonight you also approved the Tahoma Autumn Grant that they just received, and that is going to upgrade their sound, their lighting, and their projection systems throughout the whole system, which all groups can use when they're in there. And another really big one that they're working on right now is the Cultural Data Project, and that is a national standard for data and budget reporting. And that really, what that does for Theater Works is allows them to benchmark against similar communities around the nation. Board development, I have to say that I'm very pleased to be on the board, and it's been a real interesting time, and the board members are definitely on board with this and making the center for everyone that's out there. And we did have an all-day retreat back in June, and obviously the biggest conversation was there was about financial sustainability, and, and they're, they're working towards that right now. And now, another one is actively recruiting for their, their board right now. We just added two new members to the board. The next one is marketing. Piper Foundation is also helping with this. I mean, without marketing, nobody knows where you're at. And so this funds a person to help with marketing and all the marketing materials for that. Since that time, they have gotten a really great press coverage off of that. Big, the musical, which disclosed this past weekend, they had one of the best openings that they've ever done, and probably one of the best-selling shows that they've ever done. I truly believe this comes from the marketing that they've done from that. So basically, marketing, positive coverage from that is, gains more exposure for our customers to come. And last but not least is all the programming and rentals that they have had going on. They worked with us really exclusively and have outreach into the community with their classes and, and coming with us into all of our events. They're right now up in Vestancia area, and they're down at the community center working with our different programs. They also implemented a new play series, new play readings, which is quite interesting to help playwrights as they want to implement their, their shows. They're expanding their bilingual plays. They just, first time ever, they did it this past summer, and it was such a success that they're going to expand their plays and expand their troupe for doing that. And since last summer, they've had over 100% more rentals in the building per se. Last but not least, you've got to give them kudos for what they actually do out there. They won 15 Arizona Awards, which I think is equivalent to the Oscars out there for all their productions, and mainly towards their youth productions, which are actually phenomenal for out there. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations on the zoning. Questions? Ms. Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. On the council communication, on the second page, there is a whole page of accomplishments, and I, I think that's great. I have a couple questions. When it says new statistical worksheets are sent to the city on a monthly basis, worksheets identify tickets sold, rentals, and revenues. What have you, or what has the staff identified from that new information? Can they, are their financials in better shape than they were three months ago? Can they sustain themselves? What, what exactly have you learned?
Well, what, what we put in place for them, and, and the executive director worked with us on it, it's basically, we kind of want to know how many tickets they're selling, what percentage of their sales are they making with overall seats that are available, how many rentals they're having, how much money has come in from that, shows that are being produced and everything like that. Because they're kind of in a flux right now with switching from the old budget system that they used to have to now the Cultural Data Project, that is still the finalized version, has not come out yet. But I think they're on board to, from what I'm seeing from their financial reports from just this past one, is to actually spend less money from what they used to do a year ago, and basically because they lost a member of their staff. And it looks like right now they're on task to bring in more around, just based upon this last show that they just completed out, and from the, this past summer with all of the youth programs that were going on. They're on task to do that.
So you're suggesting that their financials are in better shape than they were?
I am suggesting that. And it also, it helped a lot with the Piper Foundation grant that did come in, which will set their new course for the membership software that's in, will, will be in place for that.
Okay. My second question is, since Theater Works, the Theater Works Treasurer has taken on an aggressive role in restructuring the budget to model the Cultural Data Project, which serves more than 14,000 arts and cultural organizations in 12 states and a district of Columbia, how will that help? How will that help Theater Works?
I can take that one. What really that does is allows us a benchmark against those other organizations. It, it identifies a structure, and, and the Cultural Data Project has, has taken off very, very well. A lot of organizations, a lot of municipalities are, are recognizing that the standardized reporting, the standardized structure is going to give better information and paint a better picture of the status of, of not only the performing arts institution, but also facilities and a number of different ways that we can truly look at the data and, and build the trend data, so that just what you're, you're getting to in, in asking the questions, that over time, we will be able to glean better information and make better decisions based upon the information that we have out of the Cultural Data Project. So that is, is a, it, it's not new. It's been under, started in Philadelphia, and it's been under a, a lot of scrutiny and a lot of work, and it will help us make better decisions based upon the structure of the data over time.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
Yes, I see a lot of things that Theater Works is doing, and some of them are nice, but it still seems to be in the framework of drama and, and musicals. I thought you were going to be looking at other kinds of venues, like maybe bringing in named comedians, jazz concerts, you know, I don't know if those are the right ones, but you got that Piper grant to look at what kinds of other venues you can bring in. Are you looking toward that? I noticed this cross-participation with PR- I noticed this cross-participation with Peoria Sports Complex. Is that associated with this? And my other thing is, are you looking at ticket sales? And what are ticket sales to date since you got the first grant from the city? And can you annualize that? So I think that's one of the things we're looking at. And I do want to see some other venues, because I think there's downtime there where you could bring certain venues in that wouldn't take up a lot of days, might draw special audiences that wouldn't come otherwise.
So to answer a couple of those questions, National Past Time, which is coming during the month of March, we are actually doing a cross-promotional marketing with the sports complex and sharing back and forth on that.
It's a baseball-related?
It is baseball-related, and it has the potential to go to Broadway. So we're one of four cities in the country to offer this play.
Oh, that's a, that's a play?
That's a play, and it's coming to...
That's continuing the same kind of venue, but it's linked with the sports complex.
So some of the other activities and productions that they brought in, they brought in Solo of Broadway, Music of Latin America, Tradición, Folklorical Dance, Legends of Country Music, Jazz West, and so a lot of them are series that are going on, yes, and they all are at Theater Works right now. But between the Executive Director and myself, we're actually talking, and they're actually going out into the community more. They're really at all of our events right now.
And some of those have already occurred? No, you're looking at...
July 4th just occurred. Some of those have already occurred that I just talked about? Yes.
Excuse me, I didn't quite hear that word. What was that word?
Tradición, you mean? I'm sorry. Some of the events have already occurred that they have done on here. They're also with us with our special events, July 4th completed out, and I just signed an agreement with them for GAIN event, the Safety Fair up in North Peoria, and for the Halloween. I know they'll be with us for holiday, P-83, they'll probably be with us up in North Peoria. So what I'm trying to do is push, you know, come with us with our events.
That's moving outside of the theater, though.
Correct.
I'm thinking about bringing other kinds of venues to the theater.
Dance and music, yes.
Ticket sales there.
Yes, yes.
Excuse me?
All of that I just talked about, they're all outside productions. They're not Theater Works productions. Solo Broadway is a group coming in. Legends of Country Music is a group coming into Theater Works. So it's just not Theater Works, it's other groups coming into it.
But these are forthcoming, is what you're saying.
Some have already, some have already occurred this summer. Some are coming.
Okay. Which ones occurred again? Maybe you said July?
Solo Broadway occurred. Excuse me.
And was, what kind of attendance?
New Carpent Theater is coming in October. Music of Latin America is coming in October, and Tradición's Folklorical Dance is coming in October. Millwork Avenue Chamber Players is coming in October. Legends of Country Music, October. Jazz West, they're all in October. Lots of them in October, a couple in July.
You're talking about this October, right?
Correct, this month.
All going to happen quickly.
This month.
Okay.
So this is kind of their downtime right now. It's between Big, the musical, and Ragtime, which starts the end of October. So that's being filled up with other entertainment outside of Theater Works.
Okay. That's something I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please explain what the agenda item is about tonight?
Sure. This is actually, for your consideration, is the approval of a one-time payment to Theater Works for $150,000 in recognition of the fulfillment of additional requirements on facility maintenance, programming, event participation, and city-related access as outlined in the First Amendment to Improved Property Lease, which was executed earlier in June.
So this is part of the $350,000?
This is the second tranche of that agreement. Correct.
As I mentioned last time, Dan, I support your work. I support Theater Works. But at this point, as I mentioned last time, I can't support this. I don't think it's fair to the citizens, but I'll continue to try to work with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Ms. Carla.
Thank you. I think when we made this agreement back in June and gave them a partial funding and then put all of the stipulations upon them in order to come back to us and say, prove that you deserve more, prove that you're going to make substantial efforts to make all of these changes for all of the stipulations that we put in place, and now we're looking at two pages' worth of stipulations that have to do with board development, marketing, enhanced programming, financial services, and all of them have a lot of accomplishments underneath all of them. So I think, Mr. Edwards, I think it was you that divided this into two phases so that we could give them a partial amount to make sure that they could get their Piper Grants, which they accomplished, and then come back and show us that they were going to put the things in place to get the secondary amount. And I think that it was a great idea because it gives us the ability now to say, congratulations on all of these accomplishments. It's tremendous, and it allows us to, with pride, say that we are supporting our community. We are supporting Theater Works, that we are supporting arts in our community, and that's for all of the citizens. So it is, I think this is something that we can take a lot of pride in, and really thank you for all the efforts. And I know that we have spent a whole, practically a whole day on the road, going to all different areas of the city, talking about where Theater Works could perform that wasn't with inside your, inside your current walls, and you could have even more exposure to more citizens in the city of Peoria. So I think you add a great deal to our city. You give us our heart and soul, and I really appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Could I have a motion?
Still moved.
I'll second. Moved by Ms. Carla, seconded by Mr. Edwards. This is amended contract update, Theater Works. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote.
Yeah, I'm still abstaining, so you won't see my vote there.
It is approved. Mr. Rivera voting no. Next is call the public on non-agenda items. There are no call of the public items, so we go to reports from the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett, and councilmembers. We have no presentations under my report this evening, just a couple of informational items. The first is the monthly Council Policy Subcommittee Report, and the second is some good news, and that's a memo in your packet from Andy Granger, our city engineer, and it's alerting the council to the fact that the remodeling project of the Peoria Community Center has been awarded a LEED's Gold by the agency that rates construction for a leadership in energy-efficient design. And as you know, this is one of our goals in all of our new construction and our remodeled construction, is to use the principles embedded in LEEDs, which are focused on sustainability, using, reusing materials, using environmentally sensitive materials, and making sure that we reduce energy consumption and water consumption in all of the buildings. And it's quite an achievement to get a gold designation for any construction, but it's even more significant for a remodeling effort. So it's really a tribute to Andy and Ed Strifler, the lead architect in the city that works on this. And just a couple of notes that give an example of how it saves energy. The remodeled Community Center, which is significantly bigger than the previous Community Center, will use 52% less water and 34.5% less electricity. So not only is that good environmentally, but of course, it saves money as well. So it's another example of how good environmental stewardship is also good financial stewardship. And the last item I have, I'll turn it back over to John Sefton, and this is a presentation on the upcoming Neighborhood Park Fest series that will be starting this coming weekend. John?
Well, good evening again, Mayor and Council. And you may recall, back when we were talking about budget, that we set aside a handful of dollars to do a handful of special events in neighborhood parks. Well, we've come up with a great name, and we're calling them Park Fest. And the first two have already been booked, and we've planned Park Fest for Country Meadows Park over in the Pine District, and that will be this Saturday, October 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. We're going to feature Disney movie Wreck-It Ralph. So bring your, we're going to have inflatables, we're going to have food and drink, we're going to have a really good time out there, lots of things going on, and then it'll quiet down, and we'll watch Wreck-It Ralph. The next one will be held Sunday, October 20th, Park Fest at Calabresa Park. Yes, we're going to do some ice skating in the park, believe that or not. We're going to have interactive inflatable sports activities, live music and entertainment, and food will be sold by One Step Beyond to help as a fundraiser. So great opportunity for the neighborhoods to come together this Saturday at Country Meadows Park, and then on October 20th at Calabresa Park. Thank you.
Would you give the addresses of both parks?
I sure can. So Country Meadows Park is at 11098, 11098 West Butler Drive, and Calabresa Park is at 8957 West Tumblewood Drive.
Thank you. Well, it's your turn to speak. We're going to go to reports from the City Council. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Did you ever think about Scotland Yard Park? I don't see you mention that at all. Did we talk about that?
I have not talked about Scotland Yard Park. No, sir.
What do you think about it? Do you feel that we can have something over there for the people?
Well, Scotland Yard just came online almost a year ago, and the park's doing well. We've got the little dog park there, a great playground area. We do not, at this point, have an event planned for that neighborhood park.
Because a lot of people have asked me about it, so I just wanted to bring it up, if there's any way that we could have an event over there for the residents in that area.
Councilmember Leoni, we're getting ready to gear up towards the budget discussions, and that would be a great discussion as we jump into that.
Okay. Now it's time for reports from the City Council. Ms. Leoni?
You again.
Yeah, you again.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was, last Wednesday, I was, I went to the Glendale Fire Training Center for lunch and on a tour, and it's a great facility, and I've been there once before, and I can go back a million times and go through it. If you've never been there, I'd advise you to go down there and take a tour on that training center in Glendale. It's a great facility, and I'm sure you'll enjoy it. I also want to mention that Saturday night and Sunday night, the event at Peoria Park was, was great. There were so many people there that you couldn't believe it. I've talked to people that couldn't find a parking space, and if they did find a parking space, they couldn't stay too long, so it was so crowded. But I was looking at it, and I'm saying to myself, between those two nights, Saturday and Sunday, you must have about 20-plus thousand people there, and that's more than you get at spring training. It was a great event, and I want to give a lot of credit to Tony and his volunteers, and hope they can come back next year and do it again, because I'm sure the people will be looking for that. I also like to mention that what John said and Kyle said about Country Meadows Park, it's this Saturday, October 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00, and they're going to have a lot of things going on there. It's going to have hot dogs, soda, popcorn, so whether you live in the area or not, come on down and enjoy yourself. The movie is going to be great, Wreck-It Ralph, and I never saw, but it'll be the first time I've seen it. I also like to mention something else that I think I mentioned last time at the Community Center, Community Center, thinking of a tricky chart, November 13th, New Year's Eve resolutions, January 29th, and step into spring, March 20th, 2014. So if you want to do all three, it'll cost you $40. If not, it'll cost you $15 each. So come on down, enjoy yourself, and work with the people. I also want to congratulate on our two, two young students here, and congratulations to them, and lots of luck to them, and now you're in the big leagues. Thank you. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Carla.
Thank you. I would also like to welcome our two new members of the council. We are thrilled to have you guys here, and thanks for all of your input this evening. Appreciate it. And I also want to congratulate Michelle DiAnisio. She was voted Woman of the Year by the West Valley Women's Association, and there is, I don't think there's anyone who deserves it more than she does. She is just a tremendous giver in the entire region. If you don't know her, she is the president and CEO of Benavia, which is a, which is a group that, that helps and cares for multi-generational children, elderly people, puts them together and allows them to do things that help both of them. It's a tremendous facility, and we need more of what she does in the city of Peoria. So congratulations, Michelle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Jacob and Thomas, congratulations on your, on your seat. I wish you both the best of luck. The only thing I really had to say was, a week ago Sunday, I was graciously invited by you, Mr. Mayor, to come out and help for Home for the Troops. And along with you and your wife, and my wife, and many staff members, we went out to, for Sergeant Mike Leonard's new home in Peoria, and dug holes, planted trees, and it seemed like an endless supply of gravel. And I believe that we spread somewhere in the neighborhood a six to 10 tons of gravel on Sunday, and you really seemed to be able to shovel it. But no, it was a great opportunity, and I encourage everybody to go out onto their website, Home for the Troops. They do an amazing job for our wounded war vets, and I just encourage you guys to get out there and participate. It was a great day, and they had, there was a couple hundred volunteers there, really helping out the community. So again, thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, in front of everyone, like to thank the entire council, as well as the City Manager and City Attorney for making this a real life for me. And Thomas, we're both very excited to be here, both very honored. I remember, I guess I want to thank all of you because back on, I believe it was June 18th, the city voted unanimously to approve this program, and I just really appreciate that. I'd also like to specifically thank Councilmember John Edwards for really getting this program going and pioneering this program, helping us out along the whole way. And if Community Services Director John Sefton is still in here, I'd like to thank you and your staff for putting together the logistics of this program. I'm sure it was not an easy task. Thomas and I are both very excited because not only is this a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, but because we are truly honored to be part of the Peoria City Council. We're eager, we are very eager to get to work with the City Council and the Youth Advisory Board. And lastly, because this is in Arizona first, me and Thomas are both very excited to help grow this program to the point that it will become an example for hopefully other cities in the state of Arizona. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reeves?
Yes, welcome, Jacob and Thomas. It's nice to have you here. And Jacob, you have makings of a politician, I will say. This morning, I went to an event, and I'm kind of mentioning it because the city does this from time to time with different departments, and one department that is kind of in the background is IT, and so we had a nice luncheon with all the IT people, and we even got them to talk, so that was wonderful. They're kind of a quiet group, very busy, they're always devoted, and they keep our networks up, and boy, I haven't seen any problems with any departments for a long time, so we got a great IT department. I did go a couple of times over to the Pioneer Park for the festival that we had there. There were a lot of people, it was hard to move around, it was hard to find parking, so I don't know, I just came up to a gate and they let me in, so I parked there. But otherwise, I don't know, I would, I think you had to park far away, didn't you? Too far away. Okay, so anyway, it's a good event, and those events draw a lot of people, and citizens like those events that we put on, and you heard some others that we're going to be doing in different parks, are going to be doing one in each of the districts, so I think that's, that's going to be good. And those are the comments I'd like to make this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple Saturdays ago, I had the opportunity...
A couple Saturdays ago, I had the opportunity to be part of the ribbon cutting at Pioneer Park. There was a lot of kids there on the playground equipment in the splash park. It was a very festive occasion, a lot of fun, a lot of good comments about the park. But the interesting thing is, I went the following Tuesday morning with my granddaughter and my wife, and we, I was amazed, the parking lot was full, there was, buses were dropping kids off, the ballpark, the ballfields were full, a lot of good comments from the people that I was talking with about the park, and this is one that, Peoria does really well on designing its parks, but this is one they really got right. This is just a fantastic facility. If you haven't been there, please go out and see it. And Saturday, I had the opportunity to go out to Fiesta Peoria as well. Like everybody said, it was very crowded, but it sure appeared that everybody was having a great time, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rivera.
Thank you. I want to start by presenting this plaque. I was at a lunch with the APA AZ American Planning Association Arizona chapter, putting up for audiences at home. The city of Peoria was recognized for the Old Town Commercial Rehabilitation Program, and we received an honorable mention in the open category, and it included, Mr. Manager, a participation between the city council, the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, economic development, engineering, and the planning department. So I also had the opportunity, and I mentioned this when I, when we received the award for the, for the commercial program, that had an opportunity to sit down with 10 planners, or nine planners, which was probably my first time that I've ever sat with any planner to have lunch, but this time, had an opportunity with eight planners and Chris Hawkins, so it made it for a very interesting lunch. I also had an opportunity to be part of the opening, Community Park Number Two, Pioneer Community Park. It was an amazing event. I think the entire council was there, a lot of staff, and I think the community is looking forward to be, being at that park. And lastly, had an opportunity to be part of Fiesta Peoria. There are so many thank-yous that, that I have to make, but it'd probably take an hour to complete the whole list, but I want to start by thanking, first of all, the citizens of the city of Peoria who came out and supported the event. I also want to thank the city staff who were present at the park, who truly made the experience better, better and bigger, from the community services side, Mr. Sefton, the groundskeepers, the laborers, the person who runs a park. Their customer service to not only me, but our volunteers, our promoters, was superior. I was shocked, not that I didn't expect that type of customer service, but for two days straight, from 6:00 a.m. to midnight on Saturday, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on, on Sunday. Their attitude never changed, the people at that park did an amazing job. Also want to recognize our police department. Want to let you know, Chief Minister, that police on stand from 8:00 in the morning to midnight on, on Saturday, and the same on Sunday, provided excellent customer service. As I was walking around throughout the park, I would ask, you know, our citizens, people in attendance, what they thought about our police officers, everyone had a good interaction with the police officers at the event, so want to make that recognition. Same thing for our fire department. Fire department was on staff, I don't think we had too many incidents, but they were ready to go whenever someone made a radio call, so I appreciate that. And, you know, every other department that played a behind-the-scenes role, including the engineering department, the city attorney's office, it was truly a collaborated effort and could not be done without the support of our staff in the city of Peoria. And I also want to thank our sponsors, including the city of Peoria, who made this event, an awesome event, and that many people enjoyed. I also want to recognize the council members and the elected officials who, who attended, including Representative Lasco Gray, councilmember Ian Hugh, and Supervisor Hickman were in attendance, and also several council members from our council, councilmember Patel, Ames, Edwards, and Leoni. So I want to thank all of you for your support. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I just want to add my comments to Mr. Edwards. Those of you who are, participated in Homes for the Troops last week, it was very touching, it was very important. Sergeant Leonard was there, he lost both legs from just, just below the knee, I believe it is. He, on the original groundbreaking, he didn't make it because he was a Walter Reed, he was supposed to get out, he was learning how to walk on his new legs, he fell, he injured his hip, so he missed the groundbreaking. He was here for the volunteer day, which we had, and he will be back for the key turnover on November 9th. And I'll let everybody know when that happens, because it's worth seeing. With that, thank you very much, we are adjourned.